That's what I'm getting. Two years have gone by, oh geez. Took it two years to come down to town.
Okay.
Just about there.
Fifteen seconds.
There's the what?
Flag. There's no flag.
How you doing?
I see them very good.
Well, I thought.
We had to break our next. We got two cans tonight.
Oh, this is a, there's a third backup in the car. If you see me leave, it's a rough night.
We're good. All right, it's five o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. We have all board members present, so we have a forum. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Before we start, I'd like to welcome and congratulate our two new board members. You, again, and Chris Brayley, welcome aboard.
An article of sentiment.
I think you're gonna find that we have, uh, there's a lot of things happening and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
All right, so if we could, uh, take a look at Article One. Consider the twenty-one, twenty-two Madawaska School Budget Town Meeting warrant. Do I have a motion to, um, discuss this warrant? Or do we need one? I'm assuming that we do. Yep. Do I have, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or any issues on Article One?
I don't know that you have to go through every article.
Really?
All you're doing is setting the warrant.
Well, then if that's. Yep. Very good, then, then, then.
Question I have is, has the budget committee used this? The finance committee?
Oh, for sure.
For sure, okay.
Yeah.
So was, was the budget committee at the, uh, or the finance meeting at the meeting? I noticed that they didn't put any of the, they just put school committee recommends but not finance committee.
It's not in there. Um, we took a vote at the last, um, comment combined, um, orders like many and finance committee. At that time, we hadn't been part of it since. They did reach out, um, to see if we could get a forum of finance committee members to go and there was not enough members, um, interested because there was going to be no change to the budget presented at that time. It was not gonna do me any good to go there by myself. I couldn't do anything with it.
So never recommended by the finance?
It was not recommended by the finance committee.
So I, I think, you know, since we do that with our items, I think they should add to that, you know, not recommended by the finance committee, just to be clear and the same across both, or all articles.
I don't know to what extent this board has any authority to dictate language on the warrant. I think, I think that your authority as a board on the school budget is to basically, your, your purpose is to call the town meeting for the school. So I'm not quite sure, I don't wanna, I just wanna caution you, or I want you to be mindful of the fact that, I'm not clear as to whether or not you can dictate to the school the language of these articles. I think that this, this board's role is to post a warrant. Because, because if only you can call the town meeting. And that's what you're doing here. So.
Need a motion on that?
We would need a motion on that.
Make a motion that we.
Motion was to, just to, uh, to consider it.
To call a town meeting for the Madawaska School Budget warrant.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Close? Motion carries. Article Two to consider is the twenty-one, twenty-two Town and Madawaska School Budget Validation Referendum.
So.
Do I need a, I don't think that we need a motion to discuss here. From what you're telling us right now, this is, this is just.
No, no, I mean, the rules of the forum, or depends how you guys as a board wanna govern, the rules of the forum. Uh, if you wanna have, make it official, official and make a motion just to have discussion.
Well, let's, let's, then fine, let's keep going and, and.
Make a motion and we discuss Article Two.
I second it.
Any, uh, any questions on Article Two? Any issues, concerns?
So I will, uh, just to, just to kind of up, give you an, uh, the gist of Article Two, the DDR Budget Validation Referendum. Many, many years ago, the state passed a law that dictates that towns, uh, shall have this budget validation referendum. So you have the school budget adopted as, on the open floor town meeting. It has to go once again before the voters at secret ballot election. Every three years, the school will have the opportunity to ask the voters if they can discontinue the DDR for three years or continue it for three years. And so we, we still have one more year under the last town meeting action for DDR election. So there's this year and there's next year. And I would expect that the school has to, they do have to ask whether or not they continue with DDR or they do without. But only the townspeople can say one way or the other. So, uh, this, again, um, you're calling this notice of election. And that's your role, uh, as, as councilors are selecting for the town.
Right?
Yep.
Do you know if most towns do the budget validation referendum? Most do, uh?
Uh, that I know of, yeah, locally. I can't speak beyond.
Right.
Valier, um, so.
Yep, and we need a motion again to accept the validation referendum.
I would make that motion to accept the budget validation referendum.
Second. You got a second? All in favor? Anybody opposed? She carries. Article Three, consider a liquor license renewal application for Tanks Palace, four oh five Main Street.
Yep, I'll make a motion to consider the license.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to elaborate on that just a little bit for some of our new members who may not have experienced with. You're gonna see, uh, several of these throughout the course of the year. And when they are renewed, you can, through the letter, which is the, basically the cover to the application, request a waiver of public, of the public hearing. And that, you guys can choose to waive that public hearing. So by your action, in this renewal application, you're waiving that public hearing requirement in a brand-new application. You have to have that, that public hearing for one time. And after that, then they can request the hearing to be waived. And the reasons why you would not potentially grant them the waiver of hearing, uh, would be if there had been some law enforcement issues, issues with the, you know.
Some violations of.
With that location.
Yep.
That would cause you to consider otherwise. And people would have an opportunity to come into that public hearing and say, you know, they have concerns about this establishment. But Tanks, uh, Tanks Palace has a renewal application, no issues. I've never seen issues there. So would be my recommendation to.
Any motion to accept the application?
I'd make that motion to accept the application for the liquidated removal of Tanks Palace.
We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mister Chair, um, before we go to Article Four, if you have other business, I think you should probably consider before the Article Four and Five. You have that second agenda, other business?
Yes.
You have a little packet that's stapled here.
Yep.
With the summary page. To get everybody caught up to speed, um, last year, at last year's end, you will tell me the voters of Madawaska approved the three million dollar paving project.
So we're gonna move on to this article at this point?
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The voters of the town approved the three million dollar paving project, which is now underway. The way that we finance the project, that we plan to finance the project and the debt service is for that first payment, for the debt service to be incurred for July one. So we can push off that first debt payment one fiscal year away. We have one more payment in this fiscal year, we budgeted for, on an old loan, paving loan. And that loan's gonna go away after this year. The following year, we'll have a new loan payment. So it is trying to mitigate.
So the old loan is basically paid off in full as of this coming July?
It will, no, the old loan will be paid off in September.
In September?
Yeah. And, uh, you won't have to budget for this loan.
No, I understand.
Because.
It's just gonna get done in September.
The payment's gonna be due in the next fiscal year, not the one we're, we're.
I understand, right. Yep.
So we, of course, we have to have bond counsel. We have, we have Redmond Winchell from Bangor, our law firm, the bond counsel for that. They did the solicitation. On the back page of this packet, you'll see, uh, one of the solicitation letters that went out to several lending institutions. Of several that we sent out to, four responded. And you have a summary on the cover page of what, of those four. And the way that we structure the RFP is we ask them to, uh, provide financing, uh, terms that we could use it as a line of credit, because the project is, is going to go on for a couple of years. And so we figured if we're not gonna, rather than get the money, we pay interest on it. We're just gonna do drawdowns as we have.
You've got borrowers, we need.
And, uh, and then next year, when we're done the project, we'll, we'll tie it off. So we, of the four proposals, we got, uh, we had the Chi Savings Babe, uh, with an interest rate of three point two five. And we, uh, we had asked them for a line of credit option, they agreed to that. First National Babe, um, out of Bar Harbor, two point nine four percent. Yes, on the line of credit option. Andrew Stoggin Babe, two point eight one zero. Yes, on the line of credit option. And Cataden Trust, which is our current banking institution that we use at two point six five three percent.
You know, um, how did, how did the request for these bids go out? I mean, I don't see any of our local banks here, other than Cataden. I don't see Key, I don't see the credit unions, how does it, uh?
The bond counsel asked for what banks we would typically go for, for this kind of lending.
Oh, I see. So that's, that's how these four.
Solicited to banks that are, that typically lend these amounts of monies out.
Really? Key would not be considered in that, in those, uh?
I guess I make a motion to accept the, uh, the numbers from Cataden Trust Company at the two point six five percent interest rate.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
So just so you know, with, with your action and by your action tonight, uh, it's gonna authorize me to go ahead and execute the loan documents. Tomorrow, I will notify all of the lenders in Cataden Trust, if, if any, lender, if you will. And there'll be some sort of commitment letter saying, you, you know, we've made to borrow with you. And they're gonna start all the loan documentation, bond counsel's gonna provide bond counsel. There's documentation, finance director's gonna have to provide, uh, some financials and things like that, that company bond coun, that help bond counsel, uh, providing opinion, uh, for the lender. And so we're gonna initiate that tomorrow and, uh, this financing will be in place by July.
Is the, uh, is the old loan, or the, the, the loan that, that we're about to, to, to pay off with the same bank?
The old loan is with, uh, yeah, it is.
Top?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nope, I'm not nine point nine percent sure, but I believe so. I don't have the, all the debt schedules. We have different lenders for different projects.
Well, maybe because they have a history with us, they feel a little more comfortable too. That's a, that's a good, uh, that's a good rate. That's a really good rate.
The main bond bank does that. We talked with bond counsel and the bond counsel felt that, you know, um, we would have to do interim financing, because there's spring issuance and there's fall. And we would have to do interim financing. We, so we would have to do exactly what we did now, but call it interim financing. And then go to the bond bank and have the bond bank, you know, issue their bond to us in November. That's when we issue the fall, the issue, so.
Right.
Too early for the spring. And fall and a lot of work involved with it. But we probably could have beat a little bit better on the, on the interest rate. But on the flip side, it would have been a lot more.
Well, yeah.
Fees.
And the format that you're, you're, that they're accepting this loan, which is that you'll, you'll go get funds when you need them. We don't need to borrow the full amount up in advance to, to carry, yeah, for months and possibly years without using. You're just sitting there.
Our last thing, uh, we do have some financing with bond bank, the revitalization bond is there. And we also have, uh, some debt loans, uh, sewer department loans.
Sewer department. Years ago, we used to do it through the bond bank.
Yeah.
You're right, it's twice a year and it's hard there. What would that have it?
Yeah, the only way to make it happen is with interim financing.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of work. You gotta, it's double the amount of work, if you will. So thank you for that.
Okay, let's go back to Article Four. To consider the board appointments of selectmen to the Valley Recycling Facility Board, Northern Aristic Regional Airport Authority Board, Finance Committee, Police Association and Library Board.
So in your packet, you have a listing of all the different committees, which you asked me for last week.
Yes, I got it.
And so, uh, gives you an idea of where we are at. Currently, uh, Manon's on the library board. Comes on the D R F, which he's on the airport. Lori was on our rates, but at the last board meeting, it put you, the board put you on there. And Doug, and then you are currently on Police Department Association. So we would be looking for.
All right, so let's, uh, let's just go, uh, let's go, uh, straight down the line here and start considering, uh, Valley Recycling Facility Board.
Oh, you want to do that?
Library? Sorry, we're gonna go with this list?
Yep.
I don't know, this, that list is somewhere in the middle here, you know?
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll go with it. So, um, Valley Recycling, um, I, I've been on that board, I don't mind serving again for, for another term. There's no, uh, no issue there, I'm glad to serve on that board.
Now, do they only meet during the day?
Yes, they normally meet in the mornings, once a month.
Yeah. That's an issue with meeting with rotating shifts.
Yeah. Yep. So are we all set with, uh, Valley Recycling?
Yeah, you want to take it?
I'll go for the, uh, Northern Aristic Regional Airport. Anybody interested in, in serving on that board?
Yeah, I can continue to serve on that.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants to give a stab at it.
They typically meet at five, once a month.
Yeah, I used to be on that committee.
Finance Committee.
Recommend that, uh, just take that.
Well, Keith, are you continuing as the chair of the finance committee?
Well, I'm off the finance committee as of my term for this.
I think you're back on.
If nobody else has an interest in doing it, I don't mind. I did have mine, I wouldn't mind learning a little bit more about the police association, that's my personal preference.
Okay.
If anybody else wants it, I'm okay with that as well, so.
Well, I think the bigger issue at this point is the finance committee. Does anybody else have any interest in the finance committee?
They only meet at night?
Um, I don't know when they meet.
I can be on that committee, that's not a problem. If it's at night.
Chris, does that, is that, does that work with, with you and, and we can decide to move you maybe on to the police, uh? All right? All right, the police associ, uh, we got Police Association and the Library Board. Yep.
Yep.
So, so, uh, we're gonna consider, we're gonna consider a separate board member for each one of those, so. Chris, are you, uh, okay with the police department?
Absolutely, yep.
And Library?
That's the most useless board there is, honest to God. They never meet, I've yet to see when they do.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah, you should, it's, it's a useless board.
It used to be, they had bylaws, the chair had to be on the committee.
Huh?
It used to be, they used to have bylaws, the chair had to be on that library board.
The chair of the, uh.
Where's the electman? And the priest, is that still like that?
The priest is still on, but it's, it's, I mean, in a year's time, we never, once, there are no minutes, there's no newsletters, it's zippo. So it's a very interesting board.
I think that's definitely something we can change. I mean, it's something that we.
It's, it's useless.
Can, is that, I mean, I know we, I know they're a separate organization, but being the fact that we fund, can we push them to?
The last time I served with me, we had a five-year plane.
There's no five-year plane.
I think we should add that to the agenda of our next meeting to discuss the.
Who, who else is on that board, do you know?
That was, uh, there was, uh, Father.
Father Jim?
There's a Susan, she's here, Kim DeShane.
Tim's done, now she resigned.
Can't make this controversial, there's nobody on here.
Sue's not, just, she got appointed last fall.
Did that change because of COVID possibly, or was that?
No, I just think he's not one that like, likes to do things his way and only his way. And he doesn't like to be told what to do at all. So he doesn't take any, uh, advice, he doesn't take any suggestions.
The library is an interesting setup. They have their own governance, they have their own board. We are, it's wholly standalone entity. But we, the town, provide them an employee. So the librarian employee, uh, the librarian is our employee, the employer under, under the town of Madawaska. So it makes for an interesting situation, you know, um, in respect to budgeting and who, you know, it's our employee that provides, uh, with all the benefits and where the, the lines are blurred in respect to you know, how, how much you can dictate to your, our employee, what our expectations are of the employee, if there were some. Because they're working for, they're working there, they're working there for them.
He serves two boards, two boards, essentially.
But he doesn't come to this board ever.
So is there a way to?
What burst strings do you have more club?
Well, I think cut the budget in half, which is.
So is there a way to reach out to find out if there's some reasoning, logical reasoning behind why they have the meeting? And if they are just not meeting for whatever reason that may not seem justifiable?
It's gonna take some concerted effort and a thanks notice by this board. If there are some expectations that this board would like to set or some changes they would like to make, of course, they would be, they deserve the benefit of, of the thanks notice.
Oh, I think so.
And, and so, no better time than.
Well, I, I do believe, as Jason just mentioned, that we should have this, um.
Next meeting's agenda.
Add to our next discussion.
We don't get stalled on this one, but.
Come up with a clear set of rules, like, hey, this is what we as a board likes to expect from the library. I mean, they can come back to us and say, go, go find a hole and bury yourself in it, but we need to make our first step.
Do we even have authority over them, or is it just strictly over employee?
Just over the employee?
Yeah, that's why.
So we're just gonna make recommendations? All right, anyway, we'll discuss this at the next.
In the, in the meantime, between now and that next meeting that we have, is there any way to get any type of bylaws or anything, charter or something that they may have?
I have all that, Chris.
Chris, will you make sure we have that for next meeting so we can review it, if not, get it ahead of time, so I can look it over?
Copy of more.
Yep.
I have all that. You did send me that when I became a board member.
Okay.
And it stopped there. There's no communication beyond that point. It's like, this isn't normal, normally you have meetings, even if you don't need.
Used to schedule on a Saturday morning.
No, nothing at all.
Could we get a copy on that?
Yeah, I will, I have all that.
Help us set up for the next.
Now, we, um, we're all set for the, uh, with the appointments?
I'd make a motion to accept the, uh, appointment as made.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? She carries. Onto Article Five. To consider the appointment of board of selectmen chair and vice chair. Open up the four nominations to the chair. Do you have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Richard Zian for chair.
Very well. You have a second? Do I have any other, uh, nominations for chair? If there are no more, raise your hands. We accept Richard as chair. Very good. Now, let's go on to vice, any nomination for a vice chair?
I will nominate Chris Brue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody else? Any other nominations?
Are there any other, if there were any discussion, or is there anybody else who would be interested in that? So do we have a discussion around?
Nobody nominates, okay. You can't nominate yourself, right?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can. I'm not supposed to roar, so you can. And you don't really have to nominate, you don't need a second.
Well, it's up to you.
No, I think I'll stay.
Okay. All in favor of Chris Brayley as vice? Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
You're, you're gonna be happy to hand off the board.
The tears in my face, eh?
I would, I, I, just a quick comment, I, I know, um, where I'm the board. What I would like to see.
Yeah, actually, I want to review on something.
Work cohesively. If there's a time where we feel that a meeting is out of hand, or we feel that we're getting to a point where we're beyond a normal discussion or something like that, I'd ask that we like to call a board respectfully, um, change the way, um, we've seen it in the past. I think Richard's gonna do a great job at it. I would do my best, but again, sometimes things happen. Motion to get the best of people. I would ask that we all politely or respectfully notify somebody if we feel that we're out of character, or we're out of line, and then have a meeting in order.
I believe that, that with the thought that you two as, as new board members are now acting as chair and vice, I think that's the direction the board is, is, is looking to, uh, to proceed. So I don't think you'll find any real issues there.
I'm a circus advice.
I appreciate that.
So, um, if I may, I just, I'd like to just say that, uh, Richard, I've already met with Richard and Chris to give him the, the first briefing. And they do a lot of stuff, there's a lot of unique parts to this organization. And, uh, they both spent a couple of hours with me last week. And there's more, so I'm gonna say, keep, keep coming to my office. And as board members, um, you all always have the opportunity to come to my office. And I will always make myself available. It's much easier, come see me. If you want all the details, I can spew them out really quickly, rather than type them out and, and send notes along. Come see me when you wanna know something, if you have any ideas. My door is always, there's always something going on, but I will always have time for all of you. And I think, you know, the board members that are here today understand that when you walk into my office, I will talk your ear off. And, uh, and you'll get more than the bargain floor when you came in to talk. So that's, that's my nature and I invite you to come see me, to talk anytime. And I will lean on all of you. And I think that all of you bring a certain level of expertise. We all have a wheelhouse, if you will. And I'll, and I think I can recognize that in you and I will lean on all of you, uh, at one point or another for ideas, you know? And so, um, I just wanna say that I welcome the opportunity of, of this new board. I look forward to, uh, to some good things coming. Richard, met with Richard and, and Chris, and suggested if, if we could possibly have M N A give us a, uh, an officer's training, if you will, you know, the role of municipal officers and public meetings and all those things. So I will look into, I will contact M N A to see if they're still, they used to do that.
They do, I think I just saw a notice.
Well, they do the, uh.
Do officials.
You do, do official in Madawaska, they're scheduled already.
Yeah.
For, for the next available one.
Yeah, I was volunteering.
It's due twenty-four at four p.m.
Part of that is, is, is actually the law, it's a right to know. So you have to.
Great.
But there's so much, you know, as, as a select person in Madawaska, you, you're, you're more a select, but you're also an assessor as well. You know, but you have an assessing agent doing your work. And, you know, you have other committees that, that work for this community, such as a planning board, that are appointed by you. But they, they are standalone, you have the Board of Appeals, that are standalone entity as well, are standalone committee within the organization. So it's good to have, if you can have M N A to come here, either in person or do a Zoom.
Yep.
To kind of give you, uh, the, uh, the nuts and.
The lowdown.
For us to be a municipal officer and take your, like, take your. For us to be a municipal officer and take your take your questions. So I'll look into that to see if we can get something set up sooner than later. I I do think that we would need to meet next week. I have a we need we would need an executive session next week to discuss economic development opportunity, potential project. And I would like to get you guys brought up to speed on that, and I would think that Tuesday would be the day where we should probably set board meeting, and if there's stuff that you'd like to have on the agenda for this first, not this is the first, but.
But next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, we have a webinar.
This time?
Six P M.
Okay, so you want to do.
How many broadband?
I mean, or if you want to do Wednesday, it's fine.
I can do I can do Wednesday.
But I we would need to meet next week, and it can't be Monday. It can't be Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, I mean, I guess because some are going to attend that broadband Zoom.
Yes.
Wednesday would work. I I'm sorry, I mean.
Wednesday works.
I don't know. I I need to hand that gavel over to you.
No, no, no. After the town meeting. After the town meeting, I dig it.
Wednesday worked for me about.
Yep.
Wednesday with time.
Wednesday is the town meeting for school.
Huh? Wednesday is the town meeting for school.
Wednesday doesn't work for us.
Okay, so this is.
Thursday?
Thursday, we have webinar training for new.
Is there an exclusion on Monday? Is there a reason why we wouldn't do Monday other than it's just the beginning of the week is hectic or?
Because the project that we're potentially looking at, somebody is not available to come here that day.
Okay. Twenty-third.
Are any of.
Are we able to meet earlier?
Are any of you available to meet earlier than?
No, you're not. You're a super prime on Monday.
What time you get out of work?
At four.
Four, yeah, okay.
What time's that webinar at then?
I don't know. I think it's seven thirty.
I thought it was an hour and a half, but I thought.
Yeah, six to seven thirty. I haven't read down the time.
Does it want to do it after that? Makes for a late meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes for a very.
But there is, it's important that we have this this executive session.
It starts at what time?
Soon.
Six. So what why can't we have it before?
Five?
Five.
What? On Wednesday?
Yeah.
One hour?
If we keep it to just that agenda item, it's not going to.
To just that agenda item? Yeah. We can do it.
And we can.
Schedule the next meeting at we got here after?
Yeah.
Regularly meeting?
I get out. I'll try to get it out pretty well.
On the twenty-second?
Yep.
Twenty-second or twenty-third?
Yeah, which day is?
Set twenty-third.
You turn the next school.
The twenty-second, if we did it one hour earlier at the five P M, if you just kept that, that's agenda item, we should be able to do that within the hour.
Doesn't work? So Wednesday, we're talking Wednesday, five, five?
Wednesday is the school time meeting.
What time is that?
It's right here.
So can we meet before the town meeting for that discussion? Can we meet just before the town meeting just for that discussion?
Yeah, Wednesday works better for me.
It's not our meeting, yeah.
It's not your meeting, buddy. I wanted to go to the school budget meeting here at six P M.
All passing.
It'd be hamstring.
So the twenty-third at five?
Twenty-third at five, Wednesday?
Good for the twenty-third at five.
I will deal with the twenty-third part.
Twenty-third at five. Maybe is it at town office or at the school?
If that's the last thing that I'm going to call, I would rather have it at the town office.
We'll do it at the town office.
Do we have anything else?
Next meeting date would be that, and I guess from there, did you want to set the next meeting regularly?
Figure it out.
Get a pointy finger on it. Probably get these. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at five thirty-three. Okay.
Welcome aboard, Jason. So happy to see you.
Greetings to the voters of Madawaska. I call this town meeting to order. All town of Madawaska residents are asked to please check in with the ballot clerk so that you may vote. I now turn over the town meeting to our moderator, Robert Benfley, who was elected on June 8, 2021.
Good evening. A few preliminary things before we get on with the business of the town meeting. Unless I hear objection, we're going to run the meeting in accordance with the main moderator's manual. No one is to speak unless recognized by the moderator. When somebody is speaking, they may not be interrupted. You may seek to be recognized. When the person speaking finishes speaking, I'll do my best to recognize everybody who has anything to say on any issue. When you intend to speak and you want to be recognized, you need to come up to the microphone. If you have any questions, you need to ask it through the moderator, and if you have a question for a specific member of the board or the administration, you need to indicate who you want answering that question. All of you will get a chance to speak on any of the issues. You just need to wait to be recognized. If somebody has already spoken on an issue and there are other people who wish to speak on the issue, and the first person wants to speak again, he may have to wait until I recognize all the other people and give them a chance to speak. Gary Picard is our town manager. He's from out of town. Because of that, he cannot speak at the town meeting unless the town meeting approves it. I seek unanimous consent to allow the town manager to speak at the town meeting if he's asked any questions. Do I hear any objections to unanimous consent? There being no objections, Gary Picard will be allowed to speak at the town meeting. First article of business. To elect an open meeting, those officials not required to be elected by secret ballot. There's a finance committee to choose two members of the finance committee for a term of three years, previously held by Ken Jandro and Gary Dufour. There's also a library board of trustees to choose one member of the Madawaska Library Board of Trustees for a term of three years, that previously was held by Kim Duchesne. Do I have any nominations for appointment to the finance committee? Mr. Gary?
I'm nominated Mike Forte.
Any other nominations?
Yes, I do right here.
Yes, sir.
I'm nominated Gary Dufour.
Can you speak louder so the clerk can make sure?
I'm nominated Gary Dufour.
Mr. Dufour, do you wish to accept that nomination? Okay. Are there any further nominations?
I have a nomination.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jim Seer for the finance committee.
Okay, so we have so far Gary, Dufour, Jim Seer, and who is the other person?
Mike Forte.
Mike Forte.
I have someone else here.
Mike Forte. Sir, do you have a nomination?
I have another nomination here.
I'd like to nominate Linda Seer.
Speak louder, please.
Linda Seer.
Linda Seer. Any further nominations? Those are, there are two members of the finance committee, two slots open, four nominees. I'm gonna, give me the names, please. Make me the names.
Mr. Moderator, I think we have a number of these as well because personally, if you need a check or if you need a collection, this position should be vacant at the stock, but you cannot assume the finance position at the same time that you can start in the amount of what I believe you come on.
I think they're gonna hear me now.
So what happens is, there are, the warrant was already posted for the two positions. You can't change, you can't vote on anything that's not on the warrant. So right now, you have two, you have two positions that were posted as open on this warrant that can be filled by this body here tonight.
There are four people. All those in favor of Mike Forte, raise your hand. Ballot clerk, please count. One, two, three, four, five. I count five for Mike Forte. Gary Dufour, all those in favor of Gary Dufour, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. I got thirteen votes for Gary Dufour. Jim Seer, all those in favor of Jim Seer.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight. I have thirty-eight votes. Ma'am, if you wish to vote, you need to put your yellow card up. You need to get that from there.
I have thirty-eight votes for Jim Seer. All those in favor of Linda Seer, raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, there are thirty-eight votes for Jim Seer, thirty-five votes for Linda Seer, thirteen votes for Gary Dufour, five votes for Mike Forte. There are two positions open. Jim Seer and Linda Seer win the election. They are on the finance committee for the next three years. The library board of trustees, there is one position open for the Madawaska Library Board of Trustees. It's a three-year term. Do I hear any nominations for appointment to the library board of trustees? Do I hear any nominations for appointment to the library board of trustees?
Francis Jandro.
Francis Jandro has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for library board of trustees? Are there any other nominations for the library board of trustees? All those in favor of Fran Jandro, raise your right hand, or raise your hand. There being no opposition to Ms. Jandro, Ms. Jandro is elected to the board. Article four. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $364,500 to the road project reserve account. The current balance in that account is $91,241.66. Article four is recommended by the finance committee and by the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article four as read? Yes, Ms. Jandro. Ms. Seer, I'm sorry. A second.
Denise DiPerry.
Pardon?
Seconded by Denise DiPerry.
Seconded by Denise DiPerry. Are there, are there any discussions or questions regarding article four? There being no discussion of questions regarding article four, all those in favor of article four, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article four passes. Article five. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $5,000 to the recreational facility or the recreation facilities reserve account. The current balance is $10,000. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article five as read? Sir, your name?
Gilbergoin.
Gilbergoin. And do I hear a second? Colin Jandro. Any discussion or questions regarding article five? Yes, sir, Mr. Dufour.
What is this purpose for this reserve account? Is there anything earmarked for this reserve project, or it's just money put in an account just in case of a rainy day fund?
Mr. Town Manager will speak on that.
So the purpose of this account, the town has a few different park facilities that were funded by federal dollars under the Land and Water Conservation Fund over the last 30 years. One of them is Deion Park, one of them is the facilities over on French Street, the baseball facilities, the tennis courts, and also the tennis court facilities, the recreational facility at Birch Point Beach. The town has an obligation, when they accepted those funds, to build those projects, to maintain those projects moving forward. So we have an obligation to maintain those facilities for LWCF. They do come up here roughly every three to five years to make sure that we are taking care of the projects that they funded. We do know that we need to do some work at the tennis courts. That was identified three years ago. There are some, over at Birch Point Beach, and there are some issues with some depressions in the tennis court where there's water that gathers, and we know that we have a project there that we need to find to redo one of the tennis courts, the paving there, and it's a project that the board at that time decided that they wanted to fund incrementally by putting money into reserves. So when we get to a point that we have enough money, we will endeavor to do that project.
Any further questions or discussion regarding article five? There being no further discussion or question, all those in favor of article five, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article five passes. Article six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 to the public works equipment reserve account. The current balance in that account is $61,309.73. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article six as read? Yes. And do I hear a second? Get it? Sirwa. No. So, Susi. The article's been moved and seconded. Any discussions regarding article six, any questions regarding article six? There being no questions or discussion regarding article six, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article six passes. Article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 to the fire truck reserve account. The current balance in the account is $25,000. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article seven as written? Colin Jandro, and I see a second with Ms. Seer, Linda Seer. Any discussion or questions regarding article seven? There being no questions or discussion regarding article seven, all those in favor? All those opposed? Article seven passes. Article eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $40,000 to the fire department capital repairs reserve account. The current balance in the account is $52,706.72. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article eight as read? Mr. Burgoin, do I hear a second? Linda Seer. Any discussion or questions regarding article eight? There being no discussion of questions, all those in favor? All those opposed? Article eight passes. Article nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $48,000 to the MDOT 2001 sidewalk project match reserve account. The current balance is $61,263.30. As explanation, the 2022 town MDOT sidewalk project is approved, listed in the MDOT three-year work plan. The project is an 80% MDOT, 20% town cost share. The town's share estimate, the sound, the town's share is estimated to be $135,000. This article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article nine as read? Mr. Burgoin, a second. I want to say Kote, but I know that's wrong. Any discussion regarding article nine? Any questions regarding article nine? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Article nine passes. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $55,000 to the safety complex roof replacement project reserve account. The current balance is $50,000. Article 10 is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article 10 as read? Your, Giselle, and your name, ma'am? Any discussion or questions regarding article 10? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Article 10 passes. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $42,500 to the recreational department tractor replacement project reserve account. This is a new account. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article 11 as read? Yes, Piadet? Susi? A second? Linda Seer? Any discussion or questions regarding article 11? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 11 passes. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the following general fund estimated revenue sources to be used towards FY 2021 and 2022 budget appropriations, thereby decreasing the amount required to be raised in property taxes. Veterans exemption, $6,000. Interest and penalties, $21,500. Tree growth exemption, $6,500. Municipal revenue sharing, $627,834. Pilot la maison à cadieux, $20,000. Vehicle excise taxes, $700,000. Boat excise taxes, $2,000. Motor vehicle fees, $12,000. VRF administration, $21,930. Pollution control administration, $42,500. General assistance reimbursement, $5,000. Building permits, $2,000. Plumbing permits, $1,000. CEO contracted services, $0. Ambulance billing fees, $375,000. Ambulance contract with Friendsville, $13,000, year two of a three-year contract. Ambulance contract San Agatha, $9,400, year two of a three-year contract. Ambulance contract with Grand Isle, $8,067, year two of a three-year contract. Contracted flood protection, $1,000. Fuel tax refund, $5,000. Local road assistance program, $82,000. Tent rentals, $2,500. Multipurpose building rentals, $2,000. Insurance premium refund, $5,000. The total recommended amount by the finance committee and the board of selectmen is $1,971,231. Do I hear a motion to accept article 12 as written? Denise, and ma'am, again your name? And a second? Article 12 has been, we have a motion and a second for article 12. Any discussion or questions regarding article 12? Yes, sir, please come to the mic.
I just want to know why the difference between San Agatha and Frenchville. How is this figured out?
Gary?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I didn't hear it. Would you mind repeating the question? Thank you.
I see that San Agatha is lower than Frenchville, but yet further. I'm just wondering how this is figured out?
This is based on population, and the way the assessment, we charge the, each of the municipalities, well, it's based on number of calls, average number of calls, actually. The larger the community, the larger number of calls. And so, we, we don't get fully, we don't get made whole by, when we get paid for an ambulance call. So what we do is we bill each of those towns, what we wouldn't collect from the insurance companies for calls covered by our department. And so, we have an average number of calls from each of those communities that we base our funding formula on, and that's, that's accurate. So, we provide services to those three communities. With the monies that they pay the town, Madawaska Ambulance Department, plus the insurance revenues that we bring in for those calls, goes a long way towards making the ambulance the budget be closer to the black than in the red, which historically, we've, the town has subsidized the ambulance budget because you never generate enough fees for those calls, because you don't get fully reimbursed. Does that answer your question?
I also would like to know, when they respond to a call and the patient refused to be transported, who is this billed to?
I don't know if I could actually answer that here from the, from the floor this, this, tonight. It's not really a question relevant to the budgetary number that we're working on, but each calls are handled on a case-by-case basis. All I can say is, if there is a provider or insurance company that covers for a patient, we, we would bill that insurance company.
Any further questions or discussion regarding article 12? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of article 12, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 12 passes. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to reappropriate the following reserve accounts to be used as revenue sources, to be used towards fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget appropriations, thereby decreasing the amount required to be raised in property tax. Ambulance reserve account is $250,000. Total transfer from reserve, $250,000. This article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept article 13 as read? Sir, your name?
Jim Seer.
Denise DiPerry, second. Any discussion or questions regarding article 13? Yes, sir, Mr. Dufour?
The question is twofold, that this is $250,000 to decrease the total amount to be raised, to decrease the taxes in the town of Madawaska, to keep the mill rate down, right? Now, what happens to the surplus money that the town itself has every year? Because for the last 35 years that I've been coming to town meetings, we've always had surplus money from the general budget fund from the town, the municipality of town of Madawaska by some $300,000. But in the last three or four or five years, I haven't seen a penny of the town's surplus money used to decrease our tax revenue.
Gary?
So when the undesignated fund balance is healthy enough to draw from, the board has the opportunity to put it on the warrant to say, we can afford to take funds out of the undesignated fund to reduce taxes. Our fund balance was hit back in the, as a result of the mill abatement of 2018. Every budget that was adopted from 2019 moving forward has not used undesignated fund monies to reduce taxes because the fund balance was not enough, good enough to support it. And the reason why is because when you go to the undesignated fund, you can go there typically for one-time expenses, because that's, that's a reoccurring thing that you're going to need to do in order to maintain that mill rate decrease that you're accomplishing in that first year. It's either a one-time expense that you're going to draw from, like a fire truck, for instance, or if the town were to, every single year, not spend all of its budget and bring in more revenue than it had budgeted, it would increase the surplus, the undesignated fund balance. And the town could, at the board at the time, could elect to draw from the designated fund, because there's money that rolled into it that year, that you could draw from that same year. So right now, our fund balance is not healthy enough to do that, and in fact, there's an article down in here a little further, that's going to ask this body to take an amount of money to create a, sort of a tax stabilization fund, if we were to get a hit on our tax, we lost a lot of assessed value in our tax base. So we will be drawing from the undesignated fund, but we'll be taking that money, putting it into a reserve account. We'll talk about that when we get to the article, a little bit further down the warrant.
So that means since 2000, well, we've been three years now since the tax abatement for Twin Rivers, that we've been over, well, we've been, the tax abatement was for $1.3 million. So for the last three years, you've been budgeting for some $1 million over what our town should be budgeting, I believe. Because your, your mill, the abatement back in 2019 or 18 was $1.3 million, you took that out of the surplus fund, and 2019, you turned around and went to the taxpayers and asked them for a three-mill rate increase in November, the day after you said to be the mill rate, and the last year was the same thing.
Mr. Dufour, the article on the floor is article 13. It has to do with the transfer of ambulance equipment reserve account. Your out-of-order, your discussion has absolutely nothing to do with this article.
I do understand that, but I'm trying to show the people where there's a shortfall of monies in the town of Madawaska.
Is there any further discussion regarding article 13? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of article 13, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 13 passes. Article 14. To see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government department, government body, town administration, general assistance, municipal building and elections. The recommended amount by- The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is six hundred fifty-seven thousand sixty-four dollars. Do I hear a motion to appropriate six hundred fifty-seven thousand sixty-four dollars for the general government department? Yes, Ms. Seer. And a second, Colin Gendreau. Any questions or discussion involving Article fourteen? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article fourteen passes. To see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Development Codes and Assessing Department. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one hundred ninety-seven dollars, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article fifteen, to raise and appropriate one hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars? Mr. Burgoyne has a motion. Do I hear a second? Colin Gendreau, second. Any discussion or questions regarding Article fifteen? There being no discussion or questions, Article—all those in favor of Article fifteen, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article fifteen passes. To see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety. This is the ambulance department, police department, fire department, EMA department. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand seventy-two dollars. Do I hear a motion to raise one million—raise and appropriate one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand seventy-two dollars for the public safety department? Linda Seer, motion made. Do I see a second? Yes, ma'am, in the blue shirt. Okay. Article sixteen has been—there's been a motion and a second for Article sixteen. Are there any discussion or questions regarding that article? There being no discussion or questions regarding Article sixteen, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article sixteen passes. To see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Madawaska Public Library. The amount recommended by the Board of Selectmen is one hundred and three thousand ninety—nine hundred forty-five dollars. The article is not recommended by the—that amount is not recommended by the Finance Committee. Do I hear a motion to accept Article seventeen and to raise and appropriate one hundred three thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars? Ma'am, your name?
Ms. Seer.
And a second, Colin Gendreau. Any questions or discussion regarding Article seventeen? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article seventeen passes. Article eighteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Public Works Department. The amount recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one million one hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Do I hear a motion to raise and appropriate one million one hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Public Works Department? Mr. Burgoyne makes the motion. Do I have a second? Sir, your name? Thank you. Any discussion or questions regarding Article eighteen? Yes, Gary Dufour?
Is there any money in this budget here that's going to repair the manholes and the storm drain holes that we have throughout this town? I mean, we ride through this town now, we're hitting manholes that are almost a foot deep and some sewer covers that are six inches above the ground. As a matter of fact, this fall—this spring, the last storm, I hit a manhole on Winter Street, and I created eight thousand dollars of damage on my tractor because of a summer— a storm drain, no, a sewer manhole cover that's about two inches above the road. Now, are these problems going to be addressed this year or not?
So, we leave our Public Works Department, our Sewer Department, to maintain their facilities. When we see that there are facilities or drains that need to be adjusted, they do. When we have paving projects that come through, like we do have some this year and next year, we always adjust our manholes, whether they be storm drain or sewer, before the paving project comes in, so we can meet the new grade. There are times that manholes do move to the frost, and they do come up, and they do go back down. And so, it's an ongoing thing. There's always manholes and storm drains that get adjusted. When they see them and when it's brought to our attention, if they don't notice it, they're usually pretty quick to respond. So I would encourage you to let us know when there is one, if it's not come to our attention, and we'll see that it gets taken care of.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article eighteen? Moderator-recognizer, Paul?
Paul Lozier, I was at the planning board last week, and I see around the Kmart parking lot, and Gary knows this, and I was there. And a lot of potholes at the Kmart parking lot is in poor shape right now. So this is why I'm bringing it up tonight. I think that needs to be redone on the worst part over there, whenever you can, retire that area. So that's the part—that we start with the potholes first, and then maybe later on, retire the whole parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there any further question or discussion regarding Article eighteen? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article eighteen, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article eighteen passes. To see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Parks, Recreation, Maintenance and Safety Complex Department. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Do I hear a motion to raise and appropriate four hundred and eighty-nine dollars—four hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Parks, Recreation, Maintenance and Safety Department complex? Denise Dupéry, motion. Second, Colin Gendreau. Any discussion or questions regarding Article nineteen? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor of Article nineteen, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article nineteen passes. Article twenty, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for townwide insurance. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. Do I hear a motion to raise and appropriate one hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars for townwide insurance? Yes, Piadette Soucy. And do I hear a second? Yes, Giselle Fauchet. Oh, Giselle Dionne. Any question or discussions regarding Article twenty? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor of Article twenty, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-one, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for intergovernmental department. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is eight hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-one and raise and appropriate eight hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars for the intergovernmental department? Colin Gendreau makes the motion. Do I hear a second? Piadette Soucy, second. Are there any questions or discussion regarding Article twenty-one? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article twenty-one, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, to see what—to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for social services. The amount recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-two and to raise nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars for social services? Linda Seer, motion. Do I hear a second? Ms. Dionne. Giselle Dionne. Any discussion or questions regarding Article twenty-two? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article twenty-two, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen is four hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and four dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-three and to raise four hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred and four dollars for debt service? Yes. Sir, your name? And do I hear a second for that article? Sir? The article's been moved and seconded. Any question or discussion regarding Article twenty-three, regarding debt service? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-three passes. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to ratify the pollution control sewer operation and maintenance O and M and debt service budget in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to determine the due date for sewer bill payments and set the rate of interest at six percent per annum on the unpaid balance of sewer bills. The recommended amount by the Finance Committee and the Boards of Selectmen is nine hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-four as read? Linda Seer, do I hear a second? Giselle Dionne. Any questions or discussion regarding Article twenty-four? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article twenty-four, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty—Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to ratify funds collected from membership donations and other nonprofit tax revenues to fund and operate the community gym. This article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-five as read? Giselle Dionne. And a second, Jim Seer. Any questions or discussion involving Article twenty-five? All those in favor of Article twenty-five, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-five passes. Article twenty-six, deceive the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen at their discretion to accept gift donations of money or other valuables, including real property or land from individuals, other governmental bodies and other organizations, providing the government—the gifts do not obligate the town in any way, and that such donations do not exceed a maximum gift amount of one hundred thousand dollars during any fiscal year. Article twenty-six is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-six as read? Colin Gendreau, do I hear a second? Mr. Burgoyne. Any questions or discussion regarding Article twenty-six? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven, deceive the town will authorize a treasurer under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to sell and/or dispose of any property acquired through the tax lien mortgage foreclosure process after first offering the property to the previous owner for payment of all back taxes, fees and interest on such terms as they deem advisable and in the best interest of the town, and to sign and execute municipal quitclaim deeds on such property. Except that if the Board of Selectmen sells property tax-acquired from certain qualified seniors, low-income taxpayers, they shall use the sale proceeds required by Title thirty-six MRSA, Section nine forty-three dash C, if they sell such property to anyone other than the former owners. The article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-seven? Mr. Burgoyne, do I hear a second? Ms. Linda Seer. Any discussion or questions involving Article twenty-seven? There being no discussion or questions involving Article twenty-seven, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-seven passes. Article twenty-eight, deceive the town will authorize the treasurer under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to sell and/or dispose of any property acquired by sewer lien, after first offering the property to the previous owner for payment of all back taxes and interest on such terms as they deemed advisable and in the best interest of the town, and to sign and execute municipal quitclaim deeds on such property. Article twenty-eight is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-eight as read? Giselle Dionne, and the second, sir? Any questions or discussion regarding Article twenty-eight? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-eight passes. To deceive the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to set the date that real and personal property taxes for fiscal year of July one, two thousand twenty-one to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one will be due and payable by March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and to fix the rate of interest at six percent per annum to be charged on the unpaid amounts beginning March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article twenty-nine as read? Denise Dupéry. I'm terrible with names. Do I hear a second? Colin Gendreau. Any discussion or questions regarding Article twenty-nine? All those in favor of Article twenty-nine, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, deceive the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to set the date that sewer user bills for the fiscal year of July one, two thousand twenty-one to June twentieth of two thousand twenty-one will be due and payable by March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and to fix the rate of interest at six percent to be charged on the unpaid amount beginning March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Article thirty is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty as read? Linda Seer makes the motion, second, Piadette Soucy. Any questions or discussion regarding Article thirty? All those in favor of Article thirty, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one, deceive the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell or otherwise dispose of surplus-owned town personal property on such terms and conditions as they deem advisable. Article thirty-one is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-one as read? Colin Gendreau moves, seconded by Piadette Soucy. Any questions or discussion involving Article thirty-one? Gary Dufour? Sorry, Gary, can you come to the—can you come to the microphone, please?
Does that mean that all surplus property will be sold by bid, or it will be just disposed of to whoever wants to buy the equipment or surplus?
Anybody wish to speak on that?
So to be clear, this is personal property, this is like leftover surplus equipment, and it's—this article basically authorizes the board as they deem advisable. So if they wanted to put it out to bid, that would be their choice in how they structure the bid language. If they just want to put it for sale, accept offers, that would be totally up to the discretion of the board, if this body says so, the way this article is written.
Mr. Dufour, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, so that means it'll be offered to the general public in general before sold to anybody privately?
But the answer, I gather, is yes. You wish to respond?
Yeah, I'll respond. So when we—when we do have surplus equipment, we would typically put it out there for the general public to notice. We would put some sort of notice, as directed by the board, with terms as to how—what the equipment is, if it's going to be a bid, what is the equipment, what's the deadline going to be, are there going to be a minimum bid for that equipment?
Article thirty-one's on the floor. Any further discussion regarding Article thirty-one, which has to do with the disposition of surplus personal property? All those in favor, there being no further discussion or questions, all those in favor of Article thirty-one, raise your hand. of Article thirty-one, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-one passes. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will authorize a treasurer with the advice and consent of the Board of Selectmen to transfer funds received from the state domain for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two snowmobile registration fund to the Madawaska Snowmobile Cub, Club for the purpose of maintaining their snowmobile trails. Article thirty-two is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept? Denise Dupere, motion, seconded, Mr. Burgoyne. Any questions or discussions involving Article thirty-two? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article thirty-two, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-two passes. Article thirty-three, to set, to see if the town will vote to authorize a town manager with the advice and consent of the Board of Selectmen to apply for snowmobile trail grants from the state domain on behalf of the Madawaska Snowmobile Club to maintain trails and to transfer such funds to the Madawaska Snowmobile Club. The article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-three as read? Colen Jondo, do I hear a second? Jim Seer. Any questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-three? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-three passes. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize a town manager with the advice and consent of the town, of the Board of Selectmen to apply for ATV grants from the state domain on behalf of the Madawaska ATV Club to maintain trails and to transfer such funds to the Madawaska ATV Club. Article thirty-four is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-four as read? Motion made by the lady in blue and the second, Piata Susi. Any questions regarding, or discussions regarding Article thirty-four? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article thirty-four, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-four passes. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to credit the police department receipts to include all fees and fines, parking violations, twenty-five percent of campsite rental fees, sex offender fees, dog violation fees, court officer slash witness for services fees reimbursed by the state, and all funds received from the Department of Justice and state and governmental agencies as restitution to the Police Car Reserve Fund, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to draw from the Police Car Reserve Fund as may be deemed necessary to purchase a new police vehicle and/or police equipment. Article thirty-five is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-five as read? Piata Susi, second. Jim Seer. Any questions or discussion involving Article thirty-five? There being, there being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article thirty-five, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-five passes. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply for federal, state, and private foundation grant funds for various projects to benefit the town, such as for housing, roads, and general economic and community development purposes, and to further authorize the Selectmen to accept and expend said grant funds for their intended purpose only, provided that the grants do not obligate the town to provide matching funds or other contributions that have not been previously approved by the voters. Do I hear, this article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept? Article thirty-six is read. Piata Susi, do I hear a second? Linda Seer, is there any discussion or questions regarding Article thirty-six? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article thirty-six, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-six passes. Article thirty-seven, shall the town of Madawaska vote to approve two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two community development block applications for the following? Micro enterprise program, housing assistance program, downtown revitalization program, business assistance program, economic development and fund loan program, public infrastructure program, Maine Department of Conservation recreational trail programs, Maine DOT safe routes to school program, Maine DOT quality community program, STK foundation grants, USDA rural development programs, Maine COP hiring program, federal emergency management grants, FEMA assistance to firefighters grants, grants.gov-EMS programs, Maine Community Foundation Economic Development Administration, Northern Borders Regional Commission, DECD Business Friendly, and to submit same to the Department of Economic and Community Development and/or USDA Rural Development and/or Maine DOT and/or Maine DOC and/or Maine Community Foundation, Foundation and/or STK Foundation. And if said program is approved, authorize the municipal officers to accept said grant funds, to make such assurances, assume such responsibilities, and exercise such authority as are necessary and reasonable to implement such programs and fund our local matching share through unappropriate reserves or in-kind services. Article thirty-seven is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-seven as read? Sir? Art? And do I hear a second? Giselle Dionne. Any questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-seven? There being no questions or discussion regarding Article twenty to thirty-seven, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-seven passes. Article thirty-eight, shall the town of Madawaska vote to approve community development block grant pro- project development applications for the following program and dollar amounts? Program name is downtown revitalization, the amount is three hundred thousand dollars, and to submit the same to the economic, that, excuse me, the Department of Economic and Community Development, and if said program is approved, to authorize the municipal off- officers to accept such, said grant funds, to make such assurances, assume such responsibilities, and exercise such authority as is necessary and reasonable to implement such programs. Further, the town of Madawaska is cognizant of the requirement that should the intended national objective of the CDBG program not be met, all CBDG funds must be repaid to the state domain CDBG program. Article thirty-eight has no recommendation by either Selectmen or the Finance Committee. Do I hear a motion to accept? Article thirty-eight as read? Piata, Susi and the second, Art? Any discussions regarding Article thirty-eight? Any discussion or questions? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor of Article thirty-eight, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article thirty-eight passes. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to sell a piece of property located in Madawaska, Maine, found on Tax Map ten, a section of undeveloped Canaan Street roughly fifty feet wide commencing at the easterly side abutting Twenty-Fifth Avenue, and running in a westerly direction roughly two hundred forty-one feet to the abutting, to the abutting, the under, the undeveloped Reed Avenue. Terms of the sale should be for up to one thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars with closing survey and legal costs to be paid by the buyer. Proceeds from the sale of the program as described, excuse me, the sale of the property described in this article will be set aside to the town of Madawaska undesignated funds. Do I hear a motion to accept? This article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article thirty-nine as read? Piata Susi, do I hear a second? Sir, in the back, your name? Did you get that? Did you get the guy's name?
Mark Seer.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-nine? There being no questions or discussion, all? I'm sorry. Sorry, ma'am, I recognize you, go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Shannon Mignot. I live at one sixty-three Twenty-Fifth Avenue, which is in a butter to that parcel of land. And I have some serious concerns that I have actually brought to the board, and I was told that this wasn't proceeding, um, that, as in a butter, I was not informed of this sale. This is a piece of town property that runs between the apartment buildings on Twenty-Fifth and my home, and it runs really, really, really close to my home. And I would have liked to see some discussion as far as what he plans on doing with this property, and why I was not, if this is a piece of undeveloped property that was supposed to be a road at one point, it's a buffer between the apartment buildings and my home, and the way those lots are cut, they're very, very, very diagonal, and this runs, it almost touches, the property line almost touches my home. And I have some serious concerns about his property running that close to my home. And I would like to have seen some discussion about what he plans to do with that, um, or even offered a portion of that property, um, but I was not. I was not even informed that this was happening.
So the, so the abutting landowner to the, to the north had made an inquiry to the town to purchase the property, and the board felt that this property that they were not going to use, this article asks for authorization to sell that property. It, it doesn't say to whom, to whom, there is an amount there, and it's based on, it's fourteen hundred forty-six dollars, and I think it's based on the assessed value of, of nearby property.
Okay.
We figured it out at a square foot cost, we multiplied to square feet based on the assessed value of near property. It would be up to this board to decide if this, the town's voters approve this tonight, uh, whom they're going to sell the property to, if it would be to one butter or the other, or if they would decide to want to split it down the middle between the two, but whoever the buyers would be.
So if you decide that to go ahead with that sale, I would be given? I would be given notice and the option of purchasing half of that property?
That, that would be, the way this article is written, it would give the authority to the board to decide who the buyer is. It doesn't name a buyer, okay?
Okay, well, I know that-
So they, it just, it just outlines the piece of property that's in, that is potentially asked to be sold.
Can you tell me, is there an agreement already in place with the board of who? Because somebody has already paid to have this land surveyed, and I know that for a fact, and it wasn't me. So I know who it was, and this entails that the survey costs and all that, and this person feels entitled to this property because he paid to have it surveyed before entering it into agreement to purchase it, and I don't feel that, as in a butter, that that is appropriate.
Okay, so if the property would be sold intact the way it is, and, and if the board were to decide it would be sold, that the survey has been done by them, they've already incurred that cost, if the board decides that they want to, would want to split the property in two, it would have to be re-surveyed, okay, to reflect the split, and that cost would be shared by, if there were two buyers to the property, for instance, that, that would be shared between the two, and the, and the legal enclosing costs as well.
Okay, so why wasn't, why wa- as in a butter, was I not informed that this was being done?
What you all said? Yep. Any further questions?
Does anybody else feel like I was dismissed out of hand? Would anybody else appreciate this happening to their property? Would anybody else appreciate this happening to their property, including the members of the board?
Okay. Thank you.
As a member of the planning board, I believe this, uh, this project here brought, was brought to the planning board earlier this winter or late last fall, I don't remember exactly when. And yes, uh, the, the owners of Canaan Apartments went around, went out and surveyed the property and found where the property lines are and whatnot. And I believe the planning board, if I'm not mistaken in the minutes, we advised that the Board of Selectmen and the town manager would go out and offer the property to the abutting landowners of that section of property, and to pay at least the equivalent amount, or if not half of the survey cost of that property that the town, the town owns, because we wanted to give equal opportunity for both landowners on each side to have half that property, like we've done a lot of times in the past with other properties that the town has abandoned.
Thank you, Gary. Do you need to respond to that?
I, I will just respond. So this article merely asks for authorization to sell the property, and for the amount of money, it, and the terms that the buyers pay for the legal costs, the closing and the survey, it doesn't say who the property is going to be sold to. That will be for this board to decide. When we decide to move forward, if there is going to be a sale and there is people that would want to buy it on each side, that would be for this board to decide if the voters of the town approve this article that's written.
And when does that decision?
Wait, wait, wait. We need to be recognized first. Is this your, is this question relevant to Article thirty-nine?
Yes.
You may, you're recognized.
When is that decision made by the board?
This board, this board right now is going to have to decide who's going to buy this property. So if somebody, if there are multiple offers for this property, that will be considered by this board, this article merely asks for this board-
Okay, I under-
For, for the authorization to sell the property. It doesn't assign it to one person, one buyer or another. So this board will have, it'll be on them, if they are so authorized to sell this property, to who they're, who is going to sell the property to.
My concern is that if the property is authorized for sale, that now it's, then it would be in the board's hands on who purchases the property, and I'm concerned about what the process is to determine who purchases the property, or if anybody purchases the property.
You want to speak?
So I did last year speak to both parties abutting that property, so there was notification that the board was looking at this property and looking at possibly asking the town to, to sell it. We as a board cannot make a decision of who to sell it to unless we get authorization from the townspeople to say, hey, we want to sell this piece of property, can we do that? And then we still have a long process ahead of time to go through the whole thing of working with both landowners and checking out the surveys and offering both sides. So we still have a lot of work on our part to do. We as a board have done a lot of research already on this land, so, um, it, you know, it's, there's a lot of work that's gone into this already, but no decisions have been made.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-nine? Yes, sir?
Shouldn't, sorry. Shouldn't the rela- shouldn't the language reflect that? So just let them know, hey, we want authorization to do this, but first, we'll require you, with our language in the article, saying, we'll reach out to the abutting properties, not just this pinky promise that we'll do it, let's have it written down.
So there is a process already in place to do all of that, so we can't just go out and say, I want to give it to this person. We have to discuss that and, and follow the process, so that's already been documented.
So just say that in the article.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-nine? There being no further questions or discussion regarding Article thirty-nine, all those in favor, raise your hand. That's too late. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, we're going to have to take a, a head count here. All those in favor, raise your hand, and Lee, keep your hand up so we can count. All those in favor, raise your hand, and keep your hand up so we can count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, in favor? What? Thirteen, fourteen? Okay, I've got fourteen count for, in favor. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. There's over fourteen, therefore Article 19, excuse me, Article 39 does not pass. Article 40. Deceive the town will vote to authorize a transfer of $300,000, $300,000 from the town's undesignated fund. June 20, 2020 balance was $1,838,454 into a credit reserve account to provide for reserve funds which may be applied in periods of financial emergency to assist in continuing normal municipal operations without increasing the tax rate. Such account established in accordance with MRSA, excuse me, Title 38A, 30A of MRSA, Section 501A, Subparagraph 3. Explanation is that Title 30A in Section 501A3 authorizes the establishment of such accounts by the town's legislative body, limits the annual appropriation to such amounts to 5% of the current tax commitment. The 2021 town limit in Madawaska was $359,373 and requires a determination by the legislative body that a financial emergency exists. The article is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article 40 as read? Giselle Dionne, do I have a second for that motion? Colin Giondo, any questions or discussion regarding Article 40? Yes, Gary.
Why do we need such an emergency reserve account?
So this came as a recommendation by the town's auditor as a result of our last audit and as a result of instability that can be caused by when you have one large taxpayer that pays, in our case of Madawaska, more than 40% of the tax base. It is common for mill town municipalities to have a fund like this to prepare for what would be an unfortunate situation if we were to lose a lot of value with this Twin Rivers paper in Madawaska, Maine. The town, I'll give you some examples, the town of Bucksport had been funding a reserve account like this when they lost their mill. And they were able to weather a financial catastrophe because they planned for the future by putting money aside, socking money away for a day that would unfortunately come. This authorization merely asks this body to set aside money. There is an actual state law that we refer to. It tells us how much money we can put into it. We could raise it from taxes or we could take it from the undesignated fund, which is what we're proposing to do. And it puts that money into a reserve account. And it also dictates that this board, she'll have to go before this town body again to ask to use that money. And they will try to make an explanation as to, this is the emergency. For instance, we lost a number of dollars of assessed value because one taxpayers, tax base went away. And that would, we would come back to this body and say, would you authorize us, let's say, for instance, that we funded this thing for several years, that we would have a large amount of money in there, that we'd be able to go in there to mitigate a mill rate increase upon the taxpayers when you have a sudden loss of a large tax base in the community. So this is something that was recommended out of our last audit. Our auditor actually spoke to our Board of Selectmen in a Zoom meeting and had some strong words for this board and encouraged him strongly to push for this. And likewise, myself too, this is something that I've been talking about for quite some time. But it needs to be authorized by you folks here tonight.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article 40? There being no further discussion or questions, all those in favor of Article 40, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 40 passes. Article 41 does not have to be acted on because the tax commitment was not greater than the property tax levy limit. So we're moving to Article 42. Article 42, to see if the voters of the town will grant a water pipe utility easement to the Madawaska Water District on an undeveloped town road located at the end of Riverview Street on Tax Map 5. The deed is recorded in Book 428, Page 218, at the Northern Arusak Registry Deeds. Do I hear a motion to accept Article 42 as read? Yes, ma'am. Any, do I have a second for Article 42? Pialet Susi, any questions or discussion regarding Article 42? Yes, Gary?
That is a road that goes up between the Dionnes and Central Building Property, their yard lot, and the end of the Riverview Street. Those are, to give a little bit of an explanation, typically under state law regarding utilities, the Board of Selectmen would be authorized to grant an easement to, like, the Water District in this case. But this is not a town way, it was never accepted as a town way. It's merely town property that looks like streets on a tax map, but they are not, or they have never been accepted as a town way. So therefore, we need to get the authorization from you folks in order to grant that easement to the Madawaska Water District.
Yes, Gary.
What's the difference between a town way and an undeveloped town road?
A town way has been accepted by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And so there is a process to accept a town public way, it's never been done. Just like undeveloped Canaan and undeveloped Reed, those are not town ways. Okay, they are there on our maps, they were probably was part of a plan at one time for them to be streets, but they never became streets. They look like streets on a tax map, they meet the dimensional requirements, but they were never developed by the developer. The town got them somehow through the years. I don't know, I can't speak to how the town acquired those properties, that was a long time ago. But in order to grant easements on those properties, we do need to go to the voters of the town.
Well, if you don't know if you own it, how come you want to have it there? I don't understand you, you say you don't own, you don't know if you own the town property.
The town owns a property, but it was never defined as a public way. We have legal opinion on that that says in order to grant an easement on something that is not a public way, we need to go to the voters. If it were a town street, for instance, like that we know of, then the board would have the authorization to grant those easements to the Water District.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article 42? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article 42, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 42 passes. Article 43. There's a copy of the resolution for the town of Madawaska at the back of your, on the back of the warrant. The article reads, to see if the town will adopt, or will vote to adopt, the Town of Madawaska Maine Second Amendment Resolution. Take a moment, I'll go ahead and go over it. The resolution reads as follows, whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, a well-ordered, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas the Constitution of the State of Maine, arranged by the Chief Justice of the Maine Supreme Judicial Court and approved by the Maine State Legislature, Resolved 2013, Chapter 75, pursuant to the Constitution of the State of Maine, Article 10, Section 6. And whereas the Constitution of the State of Maine, Article 1, Section 16, states, every citizen has a right to keep and bear arms, and this right shall never be questioned. And whereas the Town of Madawaska's citizens wish to express its deep commitment to the rights of its citizens, and whereas the Town of Madawaska citizens wish to further express opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the right of our citizens to peacefully keep and bear arms. And whereas the Town of Madawaska Maine's Citizen Board of Selectmen wished to express its intent, to stand as a sanctuary for the right to bear, to keep and bear arms within the limits of the Constitution of the United States and the State of Maine, now therefore, we, the citizens of the Town of Madawaska, do hereby resolve and declare its intent to oppose unconstitutional restrictions to right to keep and bear arms for its citizens. Does anybody wish to speak for or against Article 43? First of all, is there a motion to accept Article 43? Sir, your name? Is there a second? Denise Dupere? Okay, any discussion, anybody wish to speak for or against the article? Yes, ma'am, please go to the mic.
First of all, I don't see any reason for a Madawaska wanting to be a sanctuary city. The laws that we have to follow are governed by the State of Maine and the federal government. No matter what you do here, won't matter. We have to follow the laws. Also, speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I don't think it really attracts the type of business, people, visitors, residents, that we really want to have.
Jim Shear?
I beg to differ. This sanctuary thing is just one article or one item of the whole slew. To me, bear arms, if I want to go bird hunting in the Alagash from my grandsons, I want to. I can't see getting rid of our arms. Last year, a Chicago family, they did away with the Second Amendment sanctuary, like you said. Six black guys showed up because they knew people had no guns. This family kept their guns, they hid them. When they saw these six black guys come up, they went on their porch with their guns. The six black guys left. Duck offs came, put them in jail and fined them because the law says no arms. So I beg to differ, if I want to go bird hunting with my grandsons, I want to go hunting with my grandsons. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on Article 43 regarding the Second Amendment? There being no further discussion or input regarding Article 43, all those in favor of Article 43, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, I count 21. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. I count, whoop. Do it again, I think I missed somebody back there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, I count 19, 21 to 19, the article passes. The next three articles are ordinances. Article 43, shall the Town of Madawaska vote to amend the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance? The article is represented by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. The text of the article was posted at the town office. Ordinance articles must either be voted up or down. They cannot be amended, they cannot be changed. Either you accept it or you don't. So again, I'm going to ask if anybody is, anybody in favor of accepting Article 40, who, first of all, is there a motion? Is there a motion to accept Article 40, colon? And a second for that motion, Pialet Susi. Gary, do you wish to speak for or against? Go ahead. Did I say Article? You're right, Gary. Let's renumber that. Article 43 is 44, Article 44 is 45, Article 45 is 46. Thank you for pointing that out. Anybody wish to speak for or against Article 44? That has to do with Shoreland zoning ordinance. The article is recommended by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. There being no discussion or questions or anybody speaking for or against the article. All those in favor of Article 44, raise your hand. Keep them up. Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. Article 44 passes. The former Article 44, which is now Article 45, is another zoning issue. Shall the Town of Madawaska vote to amend Land Use Code, Section 4, Administration G Permits? The article is recommended by the Board, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, and again, this was posted at the town office. Do I have a motion to accept Article 45? Pialet Susi, do I have a second? Colin Giondo, any discussion or questions, or does anybody wish to speak for or against Article 45? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article 45, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article 45 passes. Former Article 45, not Article 46. Shall the Town of Madawaska vote to amend the Land Use Code, Section 3, Definitions, Structures? The article is recommended by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion to accept Article 46? Colin Giondo, second, Pialet Susi. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Gary Dufour.
I'm glad I'm here, getting some information tonight. Under structures, it says that any production or piece of work artificially built up or composed of parts and joined together by some definite manner. And then it puts in there, and they highlighted that, it says excluding fences, amended. So does that mean a fence can be made up of just about anything at this point? Or it just excludes fencing from structures? I'm trying to get an explanation here because there's a lot of concern on what the town has for ordinance on fencing. So I just want a clarification to make sure that everything is right here.
So the Planning Board Chair is here, he wishes to speak on that, Seth Legasi, who'll come in behind you.
Yeah, just to clarify, the fencing would fall under the state statutes, not under our ordinance anymore. Which would mean, I believe they have everything from streams to brick walls, all under six feet, anything over six feet would be considered a spite fence.
So the moderator has asked for a little bit of an explanation. And so the town's ordinance defined a structure, and its current description of structure means pretty much anything that is built and connected. And that became a concern over fences, and it was never, this ordinance was never meant to require fences to be set back off the property line. And it was often that state law was referred to. But it was pointed out to us last year, as a result of a land use application, that the definition of structure was being challenged. Uh, and legal opinion that was provided to the town at the time, uh, basically said that structure can mean anything that's built upon it, connected, and therefore fences would be considered a structure. And so what this amendment to the structure's definition is to exclude fences. And the town, and the ordinance will continue to be silent in respect to fences and how they can be put on property lines. Uh, you will have to refer to state law, the state law is higher than, than the town's. So I hope that provides a good explanation.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article forty-six? Regarding, uh, definition of structure? All those in favor of Article forty-six, raise your hand. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, I have twenty-three. All those opposed? But the article passes. Is there any further business? There being no further business on the warrant, I will entertain motion to adjourn. Motion from Paul, seconded by Linda Seer, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.